Good evening, everyone. We'd like to reconvene the Thursday, August 12th, meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. If you would all join me for the National Pledge of Leaders, followed by a little discussion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Begin this meeting with roll call of board members. This is McCloskey.
Here.
Mrs. Starkey.
Here.
Vice President Rao here, and President Earl Dempsey serving as chair is present. Mr. Philip Thomas is absent this evening. We have four board members present. Thank you all for being here. We want our first action item in the evening, 2.4 approval of agenda. I make a motion we approve resolution 2.4, our agenda as presented. Motion for properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero. Resolution 2.5, approval minutes, and I can motion we approve the meeting minutes from June 10th and June 14th as approved. Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions abstain. Motion carries three to zero with one extension. Staying with approval minutes, I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes from June 24th as presented.
Second.
Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions?
Abstain.
Motion carries three to zero with one extension. And one more motion of 2.5, and I can motion we approve the meeting minutes from July 13th, organization meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Rao. We are up to item 2.6, one of our favorite times of the meeting, the recognition presentation. Dr. Lucas, I'll turn this over to you.
Good evening, everybody. We have Estrella here from the high school, and she's going to recognize one of our great coaches and Spartans. Come on up. Estrella, we're over here.
Okay.
We can get you on the camera.
Sorry. Oh, the X.
Yes, ma'am.
I got you. At sports spot. Well, good evening, everyone. I am here representing Mrs. Mene Cooper, our building principal over at Lake Forest High School, and Mr. John Reichenberg as well, who is our other assistant principal. I'm Evan D. Affilio. I am here to recognize a Coach of the Year for our outdoor traffic field, and that is Mr. Freddie Johnson. It's recognized, DIA recognition. It's not like a local high school only thing. It is across the state, so congratulations. See you in my idea. I don't know if I should take it out of box. It wasn't mine to take out of box. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, we'd like to tell you.
So, Mr. Johnson, for those in the room who may not be aware or were not at the meeting where we had the team present, would you mind just giving a brief overview of the team's accomplishments this year that helped you with this?
Okay, yeah. Our boys team, we were overall Division II state champions this year. We had several kids that won individual awards and team awards. Our boys, four by one and four by two relayed, they both were state champs. We had a hurdler that won the 110 hurdles and 300 hurdles. We had a high jumper, two high jumpers that placed first, second. We had a triple jumper that placed second and third, and long jumper that placed first and second, and two pole hoppers that played top six. And we had a pretty, pretty good team. And good thing is, only three of those kids graduated, so we had a lot coming back. For the girls, you know, we only had about eight girls on our team, but they placed fourth overall. We had one girl that won four state titles. She won the 100, the 200, the 400, and she was part of about 200 relay teams. And we had a couple of girls that placed in the distance races and a couple other sprint. We had a freshman hurdler that placed second in state in the 100 hurdle, and third in state, and the 300 hurdles. So, and all those girls are returning, so if we can get more girls to, you know, help out those girls, they have a pretty good shot at being in the top two next year. But this is a, I didn't realize that I got Coach of the Year for state, so. Now that football meeting, so that's why I just walked in. We start football practice on Monday, so getting ready.
Congratulations. Oh, I'm sorry. It's a bad day during here. Next, we have Ms. Mary Moschow and Rhonda Swenson from the Lake Forest Community Education Foundation. Welcome back, ladies.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to have you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come in and present some new things that we have to tell you all about. I'm Mary Moschow. I'm the chair of the Lake Forest Community Education Foundation. And as you mentioned, Rhonda Swenson, she's a member. We have two members that are actually on Zoom, Marie Cunningham and Debbie Kevwalder watching. Since 2003, the foundation has worked under the sponsorship of the Delaware Community Foundation. In November of 2020, the foundation received its own 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. Very excited about that. That means that we have an opportunity to expand in fundraising, grant writing, and donations. So I wanted to let you know that it's great news for us and for the community and the schools. And for those that don't know about the foundation, all the money that we raise is what initiatives that our teachers and our coaches and the staff want to offer that we aren't able to fund. And next in line, which if you want to learn about what we've done, we also established our new website. And here today, Tom Brown is here and he's going to actually give you a brief overview of our website.
Go ahead, Charlie. Hi, I'm Tom Brown from Fine Line Websites and IT Consulting. We're a local company, and Mary reached out to us. We've actually developed another site with Mary. She reached out to us with this program idea and kind of showed us an older site that needed some work, so we took it and made it what it is today. You can go to the next slide. Basically, we put the website itself and just gave them a new responsive website that has the capabilities of them manually updating the files and information on the site. And some of that comes with training and others, but it's a nice looking site. It's a good presentation. You go to the next slide. The big point of this is making it easy for them to update and manage. Sometimes, you know, we all have desktops at home, and it gets pretty bad. Previous site was pretty bad. So we took that, and we took all those files, and we put them together, next slide, and we made it easy. And we also made it so they can keep it organized very, very quickly. That being said, Mary has since been trained and has been able to update the files and put the information into the site pretty easily. The whole point of this was to actually make it so that the public knew the information that you guys wanted to share and make it easy for the public to navigate and find the information quickly. And I think that's what we did, and we gave it a shot. And the site itself, it gets pretty decent traffic right now. It's fairly new, so we also monitor all of that and see who's coming to the site, how long they're on the site, where they go, that kind of stuff. We do share that information there, so you can get some reports on that. But this is a site I would respectfully ask that people go check it out. If you click on that gobble wobble thing, you can actually see the information that they're going to pass out. There you go.
So before we go to the gobble wobble, though, would you go to the heading of that?
Navigation.
Yeah, the navigation. Thank you, Tom.
Yep, no worries.
And if you just click a cross, you'll see that we have our story, need our team, our mission, our finances. We wanted to be open about everything we've done. You have contact information. If you go to what we support, you can go in to see about the grants. We were able to, tons employees downloaded everything that we had back to 2003 or 2004 when we first gave our grants away. So they were seeing every grant that was given, not only the summary of the grant and what the title of the grant, but also what it actually did. So that was very exciting for us. You'll see some pictures of staff and children and a few teachers. You have to go through the permission process, so, yeah, so when we go to get involved, we can go into upcoming events, yeah, and you'll see past events and all of that stuff, too. And of course, we have a donate button. Just so you all know, you can give directly to, directly to the fund. Okay, so please, the back of the gobble wobble, that would be great. And our biggest fundraiser, and Rhonda's going to pass out the flyers, and if anybody would like a flyer, we have a few extras. What you're going to get is a flyer. You're also going to receive a fact sheet about the fund, and that's the past 16 years of information plus some highlights. And then, of course, we'll reach out to you for sponsorship opportunities. If you know of anybody who would like to sponsor our event, or if the board would like to sponsor us, we'd be very happy to take your donation. The gobble wobble is our biggest fundraiser of the year, and it's going to be on November 21st. Easy to register. All you have to do is go into the website and you'll see the buttons. It's online registration. And actually, you can actually kind of learn about sponsorship information there as well. So we hope you'll join us. It is a fun event. We give away prizes. We have lots of food. It's, we've had people from Florida and from, I believe, Michigan, who are trying, who chose our race last two years ago, because they're doing a race in every state, and they chose our race. So we have a team award, so it's just a lot of fun. And we hope you can join us and support the foundation.
We're very excited that North Elementary has agreed again to be the location where we start and win the race and have all the fun and see all of our families and not just Lake Forest families, but as Mary said, from other states and up and down the state. It's before Thanksgiving. I think our kids are off. That next week, if the schedule's still the same, so it's right before the Thanksgiving break. So we look forward to seeing all of you there doing your walking or your running. We also have a little pre-race for biddies at 9:45. And they can get their little energy out and go for it. But it's very family friendly, and we're so excited to be able to do it this year. So the fifth annual should be a big celebration. So thank you. You have any questions?
Any questions for? Just one. I know some of these five Ks, the registration doesn't open until a certain time. Is this open now?
It is open now.
Races2rhine.com.
Or lfcf.org.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, very much for everything that you do. Okay, we are on to section 2.7, citizens' participation. It's the opportunity for members of the public to address the board during the public session. We do have a few folks signed up this evening. If anyone was here to address and had not signed up, please take the opportunity to do so now. We do limit our speakers to three minutes each, and Mrs. Piccolo, the board assistant, will be timing. First one I have in front of me is Ms. Laura Jennings from Carrington. Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind. Welcome, Ms. Jennings. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Like you said, I'm Laura Jennings. I'm here strongly advocating to make masks optimal in school for our younger students. Should the governor remove this ridiculous mask mandate, which is not based on science? The decision to institute a mask mandate was most likely based on CDC guidelines that were developed out of fear of virus spreading, not science, or teacher unions who are not scientists or medical professionals. The lack of data because, or and the lack of data because there has been no studies to evaluate the effectiveness of children wearing masks versus unmasked children and the spread of COVID. Masking children this young, kindergarten to third grade, is extremely ineffective and has more negative consequences than benefits. A quote from epidemiologist Michael Osterholm, "Many of the face cloth coverings that people wear are not very effective in reducing any of the virus movement in or out." This expert served on the current president's COVID task force. The study, or a study performed in North Carolina schools showed children transmit COVID far less than adults. The cases of children ages zero to 11 contracting COVID are also lower than any other age groups, and this is reflected in the CDC's COVID-19 weekly case of support. And as of this week, the numbers for all age groups are declining. Masks also pose a more silent threat to children and their development, especially those in elementary school where they are still learning language development, phonics, and using facial expressions for social and emotional views. The risk of COVID to kids is far less, excuse me, the risk of COVID to kids is far less than the risk of long-term mask use. Ultimately, it is my body, my choice. Do not take parental rights away from us because we know our children best, and we are responsible for what is doing right, what is doing what is right for them. I hope the school board takes this information into consideration. If and when the governor should remove this misguided mask mandate in schools. I would also like to recommend breaking down the mask guidance further into age groups and allowing masks as optional for kindergarten to third grade students at minimum, since wearing masks causes the most damage to this age group.
Thank you, Mrs. Jennings. Next up is Paul Hudson of Felton. Welcome, Mr. Hudson.
Good morning, or good evening, good evening. All right, I'm Paul Hudson. I have two great grandchildren going attending school here at Lake Forest Schools. And I'm concerned about their health in having to breathe through a mask for six to eight hours a day. I just think, long term, that might affect people's lungs as they're developing. It's stupid. I don't understand this. I'm concerned about their ability to play with friends and communicate. You cut off someone half of their face, you don't know. You can't predict what kind of mood or anything. A smile brings out happiness in a lot of people. I smile at you, chances are you're going to smile back at me. I think that's really important, you know, especially school, around school. Less chance of fights, maybe. I don't know. I just think smiling is very contagious, and if you're wearing a mask, you can't tell. Maybe there's kids that are having problems at home, and they need some help. You know, maybe they're getting abused at home. And if you wear a mask all day, the teacher may not catch that. Also, to communicate, to talk amongst one another is harder with a mask on. I find myself trying to ask people, what was that you said? Now that the mask is all around, and less than 1%, extremely low percentage of children actually have gotten COVID. So I think the governor is way off base in requiring this. I don't think it's necessary. I asked the school board to let Governor Carney know and ask him to withdraw this stupid mandate for wearing masks to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. You're welcome. And one more, Mr. Troy Dennis, Sr., of Felton.
Yes, Mr. Dennis, thank you for being here. Thank you. I apologize for late application for that. I want to address you as people. I've read all of your bios on the Lake Forest. I'm a pastor, so I thank you for the time. That does beat me in line. I don't usually have that. And I'm also a chaplain for hospice. I face a lot of people that want me to come into their house, don't wear a mask. I don't care about the mask. I just want you to be in here with me. I want you to be here to support me in what may be my last days or months. And I know people coming here were all kind of a little worked up. Everybody gets excited, but you all are going through the same thing. I see that you all have children, and you all have family members in the school district. I looked at every single one of you. And I appreciate that mask, by the way, Mr. Superintendent. But I think we've gone so much with feelings that, you know, I can give a statistic, this person can give a statistic. But what truly is, my granddaughter said, come to tell me, she said, Papa, we might have to wear a mask in school where she goes to East Elementary. And I said, well, we're going to see if we can get that changed. Lake Forest, I went to Lake Forest graduate '84, a little bit older than you all, except maybe the superintendent here. But I want to tell you, oh, sorry, sorry. But I want to tell you, I love this school. Even when we call it Lake Forest, I think it still leaks today. Still has root problems, always has, but it's our home. It's Felton. It's Delaware. It's surrounding areas. It's Harrington, Frederica. Everything is part of this because we have common sense. We don't just take what the Secretary of State says or the governor of the education. You know, I was told by several people, you know what, dang on, Lake Forest, they're the only ones that are big holdouts. I said, yeah, because they use common sense. They use their intelligence. They don't just say, okay, well, everybody's going to do it. Let's all go jump on the bridge together. That's what I like about living here. That's what came after I got out of the Navy. That's what brought me right back here, because this is home. I'm asking you all, put your children, our children, our grandchildren, great grandchildren first, and say, no, Mr. Governor, if you're going to have demand masks, then you can wear them. But we don't need to wear a mask. We've already proven over and over, medical science, everybody's proven, every virus can fit through these masks that we're wearing. They don't do anything except cause breeding problems. All of our patients, half of our patients that we have now, COPD has increased, CHF has increased, heart attacks, asthma, everything is related. And a lot of these things come back to the mask usage and abusage of power and authority. You all have the power, the authority to make the difference. Let's stand for something like forest. Let's stand for something positive. Let's bring the first state back to the first state in something good and positive.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Appreciate it. Thank you all for your comments and clearly the overwhelming support, or I should say, maybe disapproval of the mandate that has been provided to Delaware districts by the governor. But as Ms. Jennings so eloquently put in hers, there really is, if I may say, behalf of the board, there really is no decision point for us tonight. We definitely, we hear your concerns loud and clear. But unfortunately, at this point, they are a little misdirected in that we are not the decision makers here. And we do consider to be legally bound by what has been placed upon us. Now, had it not been our decision, had there been a decision point tonight, I can't tell you what that would have been. Certainly, if the decision had been in front of us several weeks ago, I think we're all very certain where it might have gone. Now, maybe not so sure. When it comes time that it is put back on us, we will certainly consider all of the valid points that everyone has made this evening, as well as our own children, and everything that we see out of your children and grandchildren. And we will do what we feel is absolutely the best, and I hope you all hear that loud and clear from us. So, thank you all very much. With that said, I do not have anyone else signed up, and there is no one on line signed up. Mrs. Piccolo, is that correct? Okay, all right. Thank you again. We are going to move on to section three, item 3.1, financial reports. Mr. Kirk Kelman, welcome, Mr. Kelman.
Thank you. The first report that we have this evening is the Financial Monthly Board Report that closed out the previous fiscal year for June 30th, 2021. So we did end the year with the state revenues down in virtually every category, basically because of our unit count and our enrollment numbers that were down with the hybrid situation last year. The other thing I'll point out, further to the bottom of the state funds section, is it shows the senior property tax credits still due to us. That was an error by OMB, and they're still working on getting this that funding, but I just wanted to present that that we had not yet received that final installment of this new property tax. So as far as the local funds, our total local funds were up over last year as a whole by a little over $100,000, which is due largely due to the impact fee that we received from Kent County. So that was really the primary reason we were up in the local funds category. We received 104% of our local funds this year, and that matched what we received at the end of the previous fiscal year as well. Federal funds were up about $75,000 compared to the previous year. Most of that was due to our Title I allocation. Overall, for the revenue side, we received 99% of our projected revenues compared to 102% last year. And the only reason that that's 99% and not above is it's all based on whatever that budgeted amount is for formula salaries, because that pretty much drives, it's such a large number that it drives, it impacts everything else, you know, more than any other category there. So are there any questions for the revenue side of the report?
The questions for Mr. Kelman regarding revenue. Go ahead, Mr. Kelman. Okay. For the expense side, I'll hit the highlights, the major changes from last year. Strategic planning up towards the top. That was down significantly because we do use those funds for like, I love Lake Forest Day and a lot of their community support. So that was down significantly. Our one-to-one technology and technology in general were down from previous years because, well, quite frankly, we do have the CARES funding that picked up a lot of those types of expenses. So as far as the athletics, middle school athletics was down compared to the previous year, and that's only because they only had one season to work with this past year compared to two seasons the prior year. And then the high school athletics was up a little bit from the prior year, and that's only because they had all three seasons this past year, and the previous year, the spring season was cut short. So comparing three seasons to two seasons, the athletic expenditures were up. Special education funding was down as other sources were to pick up some of those expenses. Strength and conditioning was about half of what it was in the normal year. Local salaries were about a little over 1% higher than the previous year, but they still came in a little bit under budget thanks to our one-time enrollment fund. Our personnel cost category was also down significantly. We couldn't attend a lot of those recruiting events, a lot of those type activities that are held by the personnel office. Building grounds shows about $90 over budget, but in reality, I mean, that's, it's pretty much about where they were last year for their spend. So we might need to adjust that a little bit up, but we did, at the end of the year, take advantage of a used piece of lawn equipment that we couldn't pass up. It was a gently used piece of equipment that was just too good of a deal to pass up. Also, with the summer programming, that also does show a little bit over $677 over. And we did run that for our special education students last summer due to the fact that the schools were shut down for that, for the final three months last year. And then homebound instruction was a fraction of what it's traditionally been. Of course, with remote learning, we didn't have much of a need for the homebound instruction. On to the second page, the school spending was down across the board.
On to the second page, the school spending was down across the board. School spending was down 23% from the prior year, and it was down almost 38% from the previous year to that, FY 2019, the year prior to the pandemic. So you get a sense of what the school spending was with the hybrid situation and not having field trips and all of those types of things that the schools would traditionally spend the budget on. We finished the year with 5% of our discretionary budget remaining compared to 4% the year prior. That corresponded to a savings of about $130,000. Moving down to the non-discretionary funds, our energy costs were a little over half of what they were two years ago. So you get a sense with the building closures and so forth, what our energy costs were. And then our tuition costs, as I had mentioned in the previous report as well, those were down substantially. And that was covered in our tax rate proposal discussion. So with the all-funds budget, we had 9% remaining compared to 4% remaining last fiscal year. Are there any questions on the expenditure side?
Any questions on expenditures? Questions overall for Mr. Kelman on our last revenue report, our last fiscal report for the year. So, just one thing, Kurt, I can make sure I'm drawing the correlation correctly. So as far as discretionary funds go, we had budgeted 12.1 million in anticipated revenue and 12.6 in expenditures for a deficit of about $552.00. Is that correct? Does it do those match up from the first page to the last page?
They probably will not match up exactly. Let's see, you're saying the discretionary revenues?
Yes.
We budgeted 12.1.
Yes.
Oh, and then we budgeted 12.6. So, yeah, the original projection was about a $400,000 to $500,000 deficit.
So about a $552,000 deficit. And as we ended up, we ended up with slightly higher revenue, 12.2, and fairly considerable less expenditures, 11.8. So a $479,000 surplus. So a swing of about a million dollars. Correct? We'd anticipated being under $550,000. We're actually over $479,000.
That's correct, yeah.
So, so that's great. And again, hats off to everyone in the district. They can't really affect the revenue side, but they can certainly affect the expenditure side. In this year of all years, you know, we had a lot of things in play. But it is great. As you very well know, I despise seeing at the beginning of the year budgeting a deficit. But it is very good to circle back and see that we did not end that that way. And essentially, our reserves has increased slightly again this year.
Correct.
So, great work to everybody in the district directly involved in the finances and all those who are indirectly. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you. All right, the tax rate that we voted on last meeting, all of that has been filed. Everything's good with that.
Correct.
We would anticipate our first major receipt from the county on that October.
Correct. October 1st. That'll be the first large tax deposit.
Okay. So that would be our first comparison as to years past, how we think things may look.
Correct. No, I have received a couple so far this year, which indications, which they have been, they're already coming in lower than they were in the previous year. So there's a little bit of concern there, but, you know, I'll, you know, I'll have more to look at when we see those larger tax deposits, whether or not that's really going to have an impact.
Okay, great. Anything else on this report? You'd also included the bond payment schedule.
Yes, so you'd asked at the previous meeting to see the information on the bonds as well. So the first item there is just a list of, by fiscal year, of what our bond payments will be, the interest and the principal amount and the total debt payment, which is how we calculate that debt service tax rate for the district. So you can see there with this fiscal year, the total debt service payment is going to drop about $13,000. And so it's fairly negligible. It's really just the interest dropping because the principal payments are staying constant until we pay off those bonds. So, and that's what I provided the second page for, which was, if you look into the second block there, that's the 2001 August and February payments, you can see that this upcoming fiscal year, FY '22, that will be our final payment on that set of construction bonds. So the $70,523 that we will pay this year, that will close out those construction bonds. And that's why you see the kind of the substantial drop in our payment that's going to happen the next fiscal year, when we get fiscal year 2023. And then we won't see another large drop until several years down the road, until the 2008 payments come due. So that will become, I believe it's going to be FY 2028 or 2029, somewhere in that timeframe, because these are 20-year construction bonds.
Questions for Mr. Kelman on this report? So again, thank you for producing this. I know you produced this again for us this year at my request. I do think it is good for the board and the public to routinely see what comprises that debt service tax rate that's part of our overall tax rate and where that money is going as well, for the board perspective, to see kind of balancing the entire checkbook to know where we stand. So, I know we've done this before, but again, I'd ask you if there's some way we could set up a trigger to maybe, again, do this annually, especially with changing of board members. It's always good for them to see it coming in.
And what I could do is, is when I present the tax proposal next year, I'll present this.
That would be, I think that would be the best.
That's what's driving the debt service tax portion.
I think that would be the best timing.
Yeah.
So, okay. Any final questions for Mr. Kelman? All right. Thank you very much, Kirk. Looks like 3.2, we're present report is me. I don't really have anything this evening. I do just want to quickly remind the board, next Tuesday evening, we'll be back here on an executive session for a special meeting, I should say, for interviews for our debt administrator position. Other than that, we have, Dr. Lucas may cover this, but in case he doesn't, next week is our new staff orientation for three days. I believe a meeting invite or information was sent to all board members this evening. So we should have that if anyone's able to pop in. That would be great. And then our return to school for all staff is the following Tuesday?
Monday?
Monday. So it's the following Monday. And I'm assuming that'll be at the high school and auditorium again, if anyone is able to attend that. That's all I have. Any questions for me? Thank you. 3.4 Superintendent Report, Dr. Lucas.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you again, President Dempsey. If you missed her, but any chance, Jeff and Dennis, for your service. We appreciate that. I'm sure there are any other veterans in the crowd? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I also wanted to congratulate Coach Johnson on that great award this evening. He wasn't expecting it. It's pretty awesome. He had a real small team. I said this when they got their award. And I saw him out there on the track, and I thought, jeez, they're going to have a tough time. They have about 12 kids out there. And that's, that's not a lot of kids for a track team. And they turned around and the state championship, they have girls' sports, pretty amazing. Congratulations to them. We'll welcome everybody back from the summer. It's not quite over yet, but we're getting close. Did want to start my report tonight telling you about some of the great things our students are doing over the summer. For starters, we had literally hundreds of students. Do you have that slide, Jess? We had, we ran the Spartan Success Academy, which was really just a voluntary online kind of program for kids reading, mostly reading that. And it was all grade levels, and you can see the totals up there. I mean, we just had literally scores, hundreds of children involved. We gave away some really nice prizes. We gave some grand prizes, Wayne's, bicycles, laptops, and things like that. The state actually kept track, and Lake Forest by far had the most students involved in this voluntary online program over the summer. So I just want to congratulate our CAO and all the children and families that participated in that. It was a lot of fun. The kids had a great time. That wasn't all. We also had high-intensity tutoring going over the summer. We partnered with a company called Back to Basics, and they were doing some high-intensity one-on-one tutoring with quite a few of our children that had missed out on a lot of instruction due to COVID. And we had some summer face-to-face learning going. Over at the high school, Mrs. Duperson and her team were able to facilitate students recovering over 230 credits lost during the pandemic. So, and several students were even able to graduate, students who weren't able to walk in the spring graduated this summer. So congratulations to them, and thanks to the staff and students that participated in that work. There was also summer learning going on at East, North, and Central Elementary School. And we look forward to hearing reports on how those programs fared. As always in my superintendent's report, I like to send out some friendly reminders. So as Mr. Dempsey mentioned, our new Spartan staff report next weekend, 17th, and remaining staff reporting back to work on August 23rd. I will speak about our return to school here in a bit. But our transition day for 4th, 6th, 9th, and 10th graders will be August 27th. And then all students are expected to return face-to-face, first day of school, August 30th. September 3rd and 6th are closed for Labor Day, so just to give everybody a heads up on that. And I'll more in a minute, but I will yield before that for Mr. Dempsey right now for questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Questions for Dr. Lucas on superintendent report? I did want to just mention one thing. You didn't mention in report, but I think you mentioned it to the board, something in the neighborhood of our Spartan Success Academy that the total hours put in by students in the state, Lake Forest was roughly half of that.
Yeah, for SORO, which was one of the programs, we were, we counted for half the learning or half the participation in the state. So that was pretty amazing. And then overall, Lake Forest kids were by far the most engaged students in the summer program.
Which, you know, number one, says a lot about our district and our staff and motivating and getting the word out there for that, but it also says a lot about our parents and our students with the motivation to actually do it. So, again, great partnership by everyone. Thank you. We are on to 3.4 LFA report. Mr. Ben Black.
Welcome, Mr. Black. Welcome. Thank you. So good evening. Because most of you have met me, I've taught over your children. I'm Ben Black. I'm a teacher at the high school. I'm new at LFA. Well, not new to LFA, but new to the role as of July. It has been interesting. I knew it was a lot of work, but I'm really learning. Figure later. So, we're just, we're excited with the new year coming up, the new hire orientation next week. We have our breakfast for the new staff on Wednesday. So we're excited about that, to be able to work with and meet some of the new staff that are coming in from, in all the buildings, all positions, teachers, CMS, custodians, paras, there are new secretaries, and we have one new tech support engineer. So that's exciting. We have all of those. And additionally, I ran across Mr. Patterson on the way over, and he wanted me to mention that on August 20th, at 6 o'clock in the stadium, is the Friends and Family Band presentation for the high school marching band. So there will not be a dinner like there has been in some previous years. You want to that pointed out as well. But there will be a presentation next Friday. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Black? So Ben, again, congratulations on the new position. Best, or condolences, I'm not sure which, but congratulations and best wishes, and we look forward to working with you. And thanks for everything that you and all, all the members of LFA. All right, Section 5 Discussion Items. 5.1, the 2021, 2022 Return to School, Dr. Lucas.
Thank you, President Dempsey, and I'm here to report about our return to school this year. A lot of the information, the CAD is generally out of the bag, but we'll go ahead and talk about some of the, I'll start with some of the things we know that students are going to return to face in-person learning, 100% full-time. Transition day, as I said, is the 27th. Hours will remain the same, 8:40 to 3:35 for our elementary schools, and 7:35 to 2:30 for our secondary schools. Transportation right now is fully functional, fully supported. But just want to let everyone know, there is a critical shortage of resources across the state. So we've got what we need right now, and we're going to do everything we can to keep our transportation going. We currently don't have any remote or hybrid learning options. We're going to stick with the face-to-face learning, and as was mentioned, Governor Carney issued an emergency order Tuesday about the masks in schools and all state facilities for that matter. I did want to caveat everything with the statement that anything can change at any moment. And as everybody knows, we've been kind of dealing with this now for about a year and a half, that we kind of had to go with the information that we have, but it can change at any, at any time. So, in planning for this year, of course, we've kept health and safety of all our students, staff, and community members, you know, on the front burner. Of course, we want to provide equitable, rigorous, relevant instruction, and we want to support all of our students' needs. We've worked in collaboration with, you know, administration, community members, the LFA, in getting ready for this year. And we really, our goal was to enhance and improve the learning experience based on the things that we, you know, we learned over the last year and a half. We definitely continued our support for technology. We've got some, some real boosts and improvement over the last 18 months in our, both our hardware and our software and our technology capabilities. And of course, our plan took into account any directives and recommendations that we've gotten from the state. So, in preparing, we continue to invest in our PPE, you know, we're building up our inventory of masks, hand sanitizer, our, you know, cleaning solutions, gloves, shields, barriers, et cetera, et cetera. We've also continued to invest in technology. We've really upgraded. You can see that big beautiful screen right there, and you notice there's no projector. So we've taken our, and replaced our classrooms with all devices similar to that, state-of-the-art. For every student, we've connected with a device. So unlike last year, where we were not fully one-to-one, we are completely one-to-one. Our K-3, I believe, or K-5, they have brand-new Chromebooks. K-5 had brand-new touchscreen, right, Terry?
One-to-two touchscreen.
One, K-1 and 2 are touchscreen, and then the other ones are traditional Chromebooks. We're really working on trying to get people connected. It's a little difficult some of our rural areas. Just even with MiFi devices that we're giving out, they're just not able to get connected, but we're working on it. And I know the state is working on installing some more antennas or whatever they use to get the signal out to everybody. We've really improved our ventilation, and we've invested our CARES money heavily in upgrading our ventilation. That means we're installing ventilation in places that didn't have ventilation, and we're upgrading our ventilation in many of our buildings. We've installed some touchless water bottle fill stations, so again, keeps kids safe. They don't have to press the button with their mouth on the defended water fountain. They just put their little touchless bottle over to get it filled up, so that helps keep the germs down. We bought some new desks so that we can keep them spread out and allow more efficient use of space. And of course, I mentioned our aggressive summer learning opportunities. We maintain our markings, and, you know, we're going to continue to promote social distancing and safe operations in the schools. Altered our plans so that, you know, we don't have all the kids sort of bombarding the buildings in one door in the morning to try to keep everybody spread out and organized. And we are going to, just like we did last year, we're in the process of creating a back-to-school video. So, you know, you get to see before the kids come to school what it's going to look like and what they can expect, along with a return-to-school guide, like we did last year. I thought that was a pretty good document. There are people prepared. So if anybody had any questions about who to go, where to go, who to ask, all that, we'll have a document prepared that everybody will be able to refer to that for this year. So, as we were told, we'll have to have face coverings at all times in all school buildings. That's inside-only. We're going to encourage everybody to continue to use the Help Free Screener that we were using last year and throughout the year. We asked that nobody come to school if they're sick, if they've got any of the symptoms, you know, fever, cough, cold symptoms, aches, pains, vomiting, whatever. Stay home. The rule of thumb is if you're sick, stay home. We're going to encourage frequent hand washing. We've got hand sanitizing stations liberally located throughout all our schools. And we're going to encourage everyone to maintain that three feet of social distance, six foot where possible. Now, we know they're not going to be able to because obviously, if you put kids on a bus, they're not going to be able to make three feet of social distancing. So, the guidelines that we've got are that three feet social distancing is the standard. So the, the guidelines that we've got are that three feet social distancing is the standard. But that does not supersede getting kids back into school face-to-face. So we have to get them in, we distance them where we can, we do everything we can. But from time to time, there are going to be instances where they're not going to be able to main social distancing. They're not going to be able to wear their masks when they eat. So even though they're going to have their masks on for, you know, a great majority of the day, they're not going to be able to do it when they eat. And I will say this, they don't have to wear their masks when they go outside. So we're going to really encourage like our PE, our PE to be outside every day. A recess to be outside every day. We're going to encourage our classes to go outside and take breaks so the kids can get their masks off. We do not want kids, as much as anybody else, wearing masks for six or seven hours straight. And they will not. But, you know, it's just, we're going to do what we can so that we stay within the confines of the law. So we'll need assigned seating, and we'll take care of that on the classrooms, buses, and cafeteria. You know, the kids have gotten really good with, with manners in terms of coughing, sneezing, habits like that. We'll just continue to encourage that and expect that. We're going to limit visitation to really, you know, mission essential type stuff, IEP meetings. If, if visitors have to come in the building, of course, we're going to accommodate them. But they're going to have to comply with the mitigation strategies. They're going to have to wear a mask, is what it is. We're going to continue with our aggressive cleaning protocols. We're going to not allow sharing of supplies. We're going to limit field trips to content essential experiences. So, you know, kids that traditionally go on field trips because they need it for a grade, or it's, it's like FFA, or, or OM, or something of that nature, we're going to allow those kids to go. But, you know, if, if, you know, kids who might go to the zoo, for example, if there's another way that they can experience that without going on the field trip, and it's not essential to the standards, we're going to have to limit trips like that. We'll continue our frequent walkthroughs by district leadership and security personnel, and keep our crisis plans up to date. We keep updating those so that we can respond to any COVID-related incidences as we, as we have to. And we still got some challenges. I mentioned transportation. You know, there's, there's a shortage of resources throughout the state. Potential quarantines are a big issue. Because with the, the increase in the volume of people that we're going to have in the buildings, there are going to be, there are going to be people who get sick and are going to be people who have to quarantine. So we're going to have to figure out how those people can get services. The availability and sustainability of PPE. I, I mentioned we have a lot of PPE on hand, and we have the resources to buy it. We just have to assume it's going to be available. We're going to, we're going to hope that it's available. Internet accessibility, you know, even though we're not in a remote environment, a lot of our instruction has become really dependent on technology. We still have a lot of families in Lake who are not connected. So that's a, you know, that's a challenge for us that we have to mitigate. The availability of substitute teachers, substitute nurses, substitute specialists. We hired a lot of new behavior specialists and school counselors this year to help out. Because we know kids coming back are going to need people to talk to. They're going to need, it's going to be, you know, a whole new experience for them. So we hired support staff to do that. But there are no subs out there. So people are absent. We don't know, you know, it's going to be tough supporting them. As well as our support staff, our, our paraprofessionals, our cafeteria workers. You know, labor is, there's a shortage of labor right now in the labor market. So the availability of subs is going to be a challenge for us. And, and of course, the elephant in the room is, you know, there's still this COVID lurking, you know, around every corner, if you watch the news. But it is still out there, and it is, you know, it does exist. Yeah. Next slide. So in summary, we are returning to school face-to-face, which is a big win, folks, to be quite honest with you that. At the end of the day, we can get all the students back for direct instruction. That's a big win. 4th, 6th, and 9th grade, August 27th. Also 10th grade, because those students have not yet had the real opportunity to be in, to see the high school. So we may get the, let the 10th graders come back on the 27th. All students on the August 30th for the first official day at school. Everybody's got to wear a mask. Our mitigation strategies that we ended the year on, we're going to keep them in place. Extracurricular activities are authorized. We will be allowing extracurricular activities just as long as everybody complies with the same mitigation strategies. If they're outdoors, they're good to go. They just want to social distance and act responsibly. If they're indoors, they're going to have to wear masks. School sports are approved. We are going to take off the restrictions, for example, for spectators. We'll have as many spectators come as, as, you know, we can fit in there. But again, outdoors, no mask. Indoors, they're going to have to wear a mask. And again, just if I could reiterate that these plans are also going to change based on spread, severity, any other directives that could come down from the state, federal government, the Department of Public Health, or the CDC. And I'll finish with questions and discussion for the board.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Board members, questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas in return to school? All right. Again, not easy. We know it's not easy on you, the administrative staff. It's not going to be ideal for teaching staff, parents, families, students. But appreciate all the effort that's gone into this. And we are looking forward to getting our students back into our four walls in just a few short weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to section seven.
I'm sorry, we can't, we can't talk in, in session, but we can talk after.
Oh, did I skip one?
Oh, I thought you were going to question.
Yeah.
Sorry. Just for the board, that's correct. So, so just so everyone understands, excuse me, just doesn't understand the decorum of, of the board meetings. There's an opportunity, within state law, there's an opportunity for every public meeting for public comment at the beginning of the session. At that point, the board, the, the meeting then becomes for the board itself. And we don't, for the decorum, we don't typically entertain the back and forth. You are more than welcome to contact any district staff as well. Contact board members directly.
So if you say something, we can't call it a public, we can't ask a question.
That's, that's correct, ma'am.
But should be available afterwards, right?
We may be available afterwards, sure.
Say your question for the next meeting. That's what they want. They want you to say.
All right. So we are moving on to, all right, I missed 5.2. 5.2 capital improvement, no cost referendum. Dr. Lucas?
So we have Mr. Groves here, and we're going to revisit the no-cost referendum planning process that we're going through right now. Just for a quick review. We have some funds available essentially in the bank that we can leverage with state funds at no cost to the taxpayer to, for some capital improvement projects. So we've been talking about this for a few months now. Next board meeting, August 26th, we've got to decide whether or not we want to go forward with our certificate of necessity. So I'll let Mr. Groves catch us up from there.
Welcome, Mr. Groves. I didn't see you being here again.
Sure. Dr. Lucas did a really good job in 20 seconds, but I want to take about three minutes to do that. So this is really an update from the presentation from the end of June. Since then, the largest effort has been refining all of cost budgets, so we have more accurate numbers. Creating the spreadsheet and getting updated. Structure budget. Firm understanding of what all the other costs. The other large task is, has really just been filling out the actual certificate, the request forms for the necessity. So there's a fair amount there. We are about done. 95% of the information we can provide. I'll be giving that to Mr. Kellerman and Mr. Starr tomorrow. Take it or those documents to be completed. We hope to have them on the board in about a week, per review prior to the meeting of the 26th, which is when we'll be looking for a decision. Assuming that the board approves of proceeding with the request, the calendar head is really not changed. We need to have board approval in recorded minutes so that we can submit the request to DOE by August 30th. The rest in blue is really some of the, the usual timeframes and, and activities that we see after the request has been submitted. There may or may not be discussions or face-to-face meetings with representatives of DOE in November. That is when they issue the certificate of necessity, if they deem it necessary. So we're assuming we would get that sort of fit in November. And then immediately after that, we should be preparing and scheduling that for it. Assuming the referendum's passed, the bond bill next year, which is supposed to receive, you should expect funding in the fall of 2022. That's, that's the plan. Quick update on what we've done, but we'll be back in two weeks.
Questions or discussion for Mr. Groves, Mr. Starr, Dr. Lucas from the board on this topic? Just a word, that'll be on the agenda. That will be, and that'll be, would be, need to be in action at a moment next, for me. Thank you, Mr. Row. That's correct. For those in the room who could potentially see this referendum coming forward in, in several months. It is a lot of capital improvements. One thing, you know, one of our, as one of our speakers, formerly graduate, mentioned about the Lee Forest. This is a big part of this, is the roofs and some deferred maintenance that we need to take care of. And we are looking to, with money that we have in the bank, like putting that forward to utilize state money that will be available. It does require a referendum vote out to the community, even though it is anticipated to not impact the tax rate. It's just something the district has been very frugal about, has done a good job over the years to develop this funding. And we need, still need the community's support for it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Groves. Okay. Now on to section seven amendments.
7.1, section seven amendments, I make a motion to approve resolution 7.1. 2021, 2022, school year modified district calendar as a.
Emotion on floor, properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? So if we could just get a quick description, so we're changing a day. September 17th was to be a school day.
It was.
Looking to make it a professional development day.
Yes.
Any background on that as to thoughts and need?
Yes. The, the, the district is, is one of the few districts that's participating in the new teacher evaluation system. And there's a requirement that the teachers are given a, basically a full day opportunity to learn about the system and learn about how they're going to be evaluated in the future. It's a, it's a really good opportunity for us because it's a chance for the administrators and the teachers to learn the new system, essentially under no consequences. It's a no-fault kind of, kind of way to learn how the system's going to really work and how can you implement it effectively. But we need a full training day. We didn't want to take away from the prep time during the week prior to school. We have a number, we always build in extra days into the system. A unintended benefit is, it's going to allow for school to start off on a much, at a much slower pace, if you notice. The first three weeks of school, there are going to be four-day weeks. And so we felt like that was an unintended benefit because, you know, people haven't been used to going to school five days a week for 18 months. So give kids a chance to ease in and then use that day to our advantage with the staff and get that staff development done.
Okay. Thank you. I, I would say, so this, our, the previous schedule has already been published, right? Has necessarily been distributed. I would just recommend as we get close to the 17th, that we send out, each school sends out multiple reminders about the 17th. So we don't have kids waiting in bus stops. All right. Hearing no other discussion, have a motion on the floor. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero. Section nine, personnel resignations and make a motion to approve resolutions 9.1 through 9.10. Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero. Section 10, personnel retirements, I make a motion to approve resolution 10.1. Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section 11, personnel resümens, I make a motion to approve resolution 11.1, 11.2.
We have emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Here none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section 12, personnel transfers, I make a motion to approve resolutions 12.1 through 12.14.
You have emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section 13, personnel hopping deployment, I make a motion to approve resolutions 13.1 through 13.22.
Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section 16, personnel release of absence, I make a motion to approve resolution 16.1.
Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section 18, personnel termination, I make a motion to approve resolution 18.1.
Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section 22, other business, I make a motion to approve resolution 22.1, school choice, as written.
Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
And finally, section 24, other business financial reports, I make a motion to approve resolution 24.1. The board's financial report that's presented.
Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Rao. Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. We're on to section 26, board reports and other items. 26.1, Delaware School Board Association. Mrs. Starkey?
Yes. We have not met since the last time we've met as a board, but our first meeting of the New Year, September 1st.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Starkey? Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. 26.2, Legislative Committee. Mr. Rao?
Same report, and I do not see our first meeting. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rao? Get our assignments from last month, but 26.3, ECAT Policy Council. Mrs. Starkey?
And we have not met. Same report, the other two. Not sure when our first meeting will be. It usually seems to be a good month or more, once they get to the school year. But I will let you know when I know.
Any questions for Mrs. Starkey, ECAT Policy Council? Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. All right. Item 26.4, Good at the Order. Opportunity for board members to address any items not covered elsewhere on the agenda. All right. I do not believe we have a need for executive session.
No, sir.
With that said, we entertain a motion for adjournment. Emotion on the floor, properly seconded. Any questions on that motion? So just quickly, before we adjourn, adjourn, to members of the public that joined us in person, thank you. We appreciate you being here. And I will say that we appreciate you being here regardless of the reason that you are here. Because, you know, our job as community members, our role as community members is to work with administration on the, the management of, of this district. And we represent you, members of the community. And the vast majority of board In the vast majority of board meetings, we are here with members of the administration and staff with very little, very low community turnout. So we do appreciate you being here. We love seeing you here, and please come back and talk to the community. With that said, we'll take, make a motion, or we have a motion on the floor, so move to a vote. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you all. Our next meeting is Thursday, August twenty-sixth, back here at this location. Thank you all for that.